I now call to order the April ninth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting board of trustees. Time being six thirty P M. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please? Trustee Daly.
President.
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to amend the agenda to add consideration of a resolution.
Okay. Make that item. Let's see. I guess we'll do. Yeah. E three. That'd be fantastic. Thank you. Um, do you have anything to submit? Any conflicts with the agenda this evening? Okay, now is time for public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak will be given three minutes. Approach podium, state your name for the record. Uh, I will ask that we keep it respectful and kind. Um, want to do everything we can to create a good environment here and uh, time is now if you would like to speak on non-agenda items.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. My name is Ed Cannon, six eight eight six Mead Street here in Wellington. First of all, I would just like to say thank you to everyone in Wellington who voted for me. Uh, I am excited to start working as a new trustee here in Wellington. I look forward to working with the board and see if we can move Wellington forward and uh, I'm excited. Thank you.
It's all about you.
Good evening, Mayor, um, Board, Town Staff. I would like to yield my time to Amanda Wilson.
Hi. Good evening. Um, I was going to speak on the rev- resolution that John brought up. Am I allowed to?
It's an agenda item now, so at this time you are not.
Okay.
Okay. We'll now close public comment, uh, move on to presentation. Uh, we will have a presentation on the twenty twenty one audit from Mr. Don Rhodes.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Board. Don Rhodes, Town Treasurer. I am um, happy this evening and maybe even a little excited to uh, report to you that the twenty twenty one audit um, has been completed. And for those that uh, are just joining in, you may fairly ask, don't you mean twenty twenty three or even twenty twenty two? Um, no, we don't. Uh, twenty twenty one, and I won't go over all of the details that I included in the agenda report. The series of unfortunate events that got us uh, to the point to where they're now, we're now in twenty twenty four, just uh, finalizing twenty twenty one. Uh, but suffice it to say, there was a number of staffing issues on both the side of the auditors and in our our own uh, finance department that got us here. But one of the things that the Board hired me to do specifically when I came on board last year was to um, shepherd the audit through to get twenty twenty one done and then work on twenty twenty two. So um, I will say upfront, I don't consider myself a twenty twenty one uh, town of Wellington financial expert. Since it was now almost three years ago, I didn't think it, and you pay me on an hourly basis, I didn't think it was worth the time to really dig in deep into twenty twenty one. Um, so I may not have the the finest detailed answers for you, but I would like to um, give some highlights uh, of that year and kind of some come, some key takeaways that I think are uh, important for for going, for going forward. One of the key takeaways, and this is an important one, um, is that the the twenty twenty one audit had a clean opinion from the auditors. And a clean opinion just simply means that uh, what they say is that the financial statements are uh, presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And presented fairly may not sound that dramatic, but that's, that's the highest praise that an auditor can give. So um, that, that's a good starting point is that they did their review of the internal control, they did the review of transactions and of account balances, and have decided that the financial statements are presented fairly. That means it's a clean audit, a clean opinion. Uh, the second thing I, I wanted to point again, kind of looking to the future rather than back three years, is that you might recall six months ago or so when we started the budget process, um, I had to say uh, Board, uh, the numbers that we're looking at are are relying on fund balances from twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two that were not audited. They were not audited at that time, so they were our best projections at that time. And we hoped that they wouldn't change or wouldn't change much so that we could move forward with the budget. That's not a comfortable place to be, not a place that I'm used to being, but that's where we were uh, six months ago. Uh, so the other key takeaway I would say is that after the audit uh, settled for twenty twenty one, uh, the fund balances that we used all last fall through the uh, for the twenty twenty four budget, uh, were either spot on uh, in each fund or were very close. So what that means is that all of the budget decisions and program decisions that you made, both operational and capital from last year are still valid and we don't have to go back now and say, oh, well, you know, the audit closed and uh, there's this major change. So those are really a couple of key things that I, I got out of this that uh, means that we can, we can move forward with it. Um, since I'm here, it seems like uh, it'd be, uh, it might be interesting for, for those that uh, don't get to tune in a lot to uh, looking at an auto report, I thought I'd just point out a, a couple of number highlights too. Uh, again, I'm not a twenty twenty one uh, dollar expert, but a couple of things might be interesting to to folks listening in for the first time. At the end of the year in twenty twenty one, so December thirty first, twenty twenty one, the net position of the town at that time was a hundred and five million dollars. Two point eight million dollars higher than the previous year. And a net position is the governmental accounting way of saying basically assets minus liabilities. So most of that is, was made up of things like uh, the fixed assets of the town, um, buildings and infrastructure like streets and water and sewer lines and storm drain lines and things like that, but also uh, cash on hand. Um, and in that particular year, there was um, cash uh, with fiscal agent because the uh, water plant project was uh, was starting up. So there was significant cash with fiscal agent at that time as well from a newly issued at that time loan. Uh, so that's a little bit about um, net position. The, the funds themselves, the governmental funds, um, overall, the general fund was up almost a hundred thousand dollars. So it was in the black that year. Uh, about, uh, about actually ninety seven thousand dollars. And the street fund was in the black, about six hundred and forty four thousand dollars. On the enterprise side, the uh, water fund was, while operationally it was about flat, it was up about five point uh, six million dollars mostly from impact fees for both the water impact fee and the raw water fee. And in addition, in that year, that was the first year that we got a one point three million dollar tranche of uh, American Recovery Act funds, ARPA dollars in that year. So that all uh, benefited the water fund in that year. Um, and as far as net position goes for the sewer and the storm drain funds in that year, they were about flat uh, uh, in net position for those years. So I just wanted to point out a few of the highlights from the year. Um, as far as twenty twenty two goes, that probably the next thing on people's minds will be, what about twenty twenty two? The twenty twenty two audit has, has already begun. We, uh, the Board, you might recall, late last year hired a new auditor uh, out of Inglewood, Colorado. They've got a, a much more substantial professional staff, about twenty seven um, certified staff as opposed to two uh, with a current firm. So uh, we expect that audit to roll along um, in a much more timely manner. They've already set up a portal. The way they do them these days, um, is you set up a portal, they send us a list of the information they need, we upload it to the portal, they do uh, uh, much of the auditing there, but this particular firm is going to be onsite as well. Um, throughout the course of the, of the audit. So they've already asked for information about uh, uh, you know, check numbers at the beginning and ending of the year and payroll information for the year of twenty twenty two, because it's from that they pull their samples and then they ask for detailed transactions that they, that they can do their testing on. Um, so I uh, whereas I, you know, hesitate to give an end date because they haven't given us an end date, I, I can't imagine why uh, that this wouldn't be a fairly normal audit process. We're starting the process now for twenty twenty two when you might normally expect to start twenty twenty three. So now we're about like exactly one year behind instead of two. Um, so my, my guess would be, um, you know, mid, midsummer or so uh, would be uh, a good, a good guess for when we could wrap this up, uh, you know, and, and into July type of a thing. And then twenty twenty three would follow shortly after that, although I'm going to be uh, working with the auditors to a, a lot of the work could be, can be done uh, almost simultaneously. Any, any kind of um, internal control testing they do is going to be applicable for twenty twenty two as well as twenty twenty three. So there are some things they may be able to do simultaneous, um, so that we can get caught up uh, with twenty twenty three as well. So that's a little update on uh, what the future is from there. And uh, again, very excited to get to this uh, uh, this point and happy to uh, answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Uh, Trustee Gator, any questions?
I did. Uh, first off, I appreciate all the notes around the financial practices that you guys added in there explaining why do we do the transfers, how to do the different things. So thank you very much on that. Um, a couple of questions I had, um, on the page twenty one of the audit report, they had just said within regards to the required supplementary information. It sounds like we just didn't have a lot in terms of things, they didn't express an opinion. I didn't know. It didn't sound like that was a major thing, but I wasn't sure because it says required, but then they made it sound like it wasn't really a big deal, but they said they wouldn't express any opinion. So I don't know if you had any insight into what that was.
You, you're looking at the, the supplemental information?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, they, they um, they express an opinion on the basic financial statements, um, which are uh, the statement of net position, statement of activities, and then the, the various revenue and expenditure statements for both the governmental and, and enterprise funds and the notes to the financial statements. All the way from that statement of net position through the notes, that's the basic financial statements, and that's what they're expressing an opinion on. Uh, there are some uh, required uh, pieces of information um, as well that, that you saw in the back of the report. It's just not something that they, they audit. I mean, the, the, the actual numbers within those are the same numbers as, as the reports that they audit, but they don't audit those statements uh, specifically.
Got it. Okay, perfect. Um, the other question I had is, I don't know if this is a required thing. Did they do any onsite visits? Or is that not something that's normally done in audits? Or how does that work nowadays?
This, this particular firm, um, I, they have not done an onsite audit in the eight months that I've been here. I don't know if they were onsite before that. Um, that, that I, that I don't know. It is, uh, I would, I would call it unusual i- i- to not show up at all. And that's one thing, you know, you might recall that we uh, we saw as a positive when we were hiring the new firm was they, they said that they, they would spend time on time, uh, time onsite both in auditing and then at the end, you know, presenting and asking question, answering questions, that sort of thing.
Okay. Um, and then looking at, this is super minor, just because this is still a draft, um, some of the formatting, so pages twenty six and twenty seven, twenty and twenty nine and thirty two and thirty three, just because of where it cuts off, you have the next page doesn't have the titles for what the numbers belong to. So either if we can adjust the, the way the layout or even just re-add in those first columns so that you actually can understand what number goes with.
Oh, got it.
Do you see that? Uh, super, again.
Yes.
This is a draft, so I just say in the final version, if we can just fix that way, it's easier for people to see.
So that we got the titles if, if, if the table carries over. Okay.
Just redo the titles so that you can actually understand what number goes.
No, makes sense.
Um, and then the final question I had is on page sixty three. Um, in the general fund and public works, we've got a negative expenditure of one point five million out of the uh, overhead allocation in general government. And then we have a one point seven million dollar expenditure in overhead allocation from public works. And I was just curious, because I know typically my understanding, my guess is that has to do with our transfers to the other funds, but I was trying to find those numbers in the other funds and I wasn't sure where those tied out.
Okay. Yeah, we um, we broke it out separately like that, just so it was a little clearer because initially that overhead allocation, that minus number was kind of mixed in with some of the other numbers. Um, so the, the other side of that three point two million dollars would be in the um, enterprise funds. And so let me see if I can find an example of that.
I was just trying to find it. I was like, I was like, you probably know where it is.
Yeah, they um, they helpfully called it management fees.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I'm not sure. This, this was a
Okay.
one-off for this particular firm. So some of the terminology was not
Okay.
perfect, um, I found.
Got it. Management fees, that helps. Thank you. I was just trying to find where those went. And then I was, and again, I don't know, this is probably just how we calculated it. I just thought it was a little bit strange that the overhead allocation from public works was actually higher than all of the expenditures by a hundred and forty two thousand dollars. So our overhead allocation was actually greater than the expenses. I don't know if you knew the reasoning behind that.
Um, I, I thought that was odd too. Um, so th- th- this is from uh, another place in time and nobody that did this was, is, is here now. So I can speculate. Very often with overhead, you, you calculate during budget time what you think the overhead is going to be. You come up with a budget, a budget dollar amount and you say the water fund, the sewer fund is going to pay this much to the general fund. Um, you know, based on whatever formula you're using that year. Uh, typically, that's not more than what the actual expenses are in that fund, as you, as you, as you said. Um, and so normally what you would do at the end of that year is you would, you would adjust that, that budget amount that because that budget amount is an estimate amount. What do we, what do we estimate the overhead is going to be? In this particular case, what it looks like is they just ran with the budget amount and left that um, left that in there rather than adjusting it to um, to actual, we, we, we don't do that any longer. But that, that appears to be what they did that year.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And I'm very glad we have our audit finally.
Thank you.
Trustee Dan. Questions?
Uh, I do just want to make a comment that your, you know, your persistence and expertise has finally brought us to this point. So I wanted to thank you for doing that. And it's been a very difficult situation, I know, for all involved. Um, so I wanted to commend you also for your professional behavior and the grace and and everything that you have got us to this point and the future expectations that we have moving forward based on this example. So thank you very much for your work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Mason.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Lots of, lots of good news here. I know it's been a long road to see this through completion, so really appreciate your hard work on this. Um, I was just curious, do we have any theoretical timeline as far as when maybe, and I know it's early, but maybe when the twenty twenty two audit might be completed?
Since, since we're, we're, yeah, we're, we're approximately on track one year behind now and normally the audit would be like, you know, uh, would be done like maybe late July. So I, I'm, I'm going to guess late July, early August. Um, I don't know this firm yet, but they, they seem on, on the job and they, they've got good staffing. So uh, we should be in a more normal timeframe, um, but one year behind. Yeah.
Great, thank you. And uh, the only other question I had was, um, as uh, Trustee Gator pointed out, uh, the audit obviously contained within the packet is a uh, draft. I was just curious when the Board can expect to see a final copy?
Um, quickly, because I, I asked, asked the auditors as well about the draft statement and they basically wanted, wanted me to make this presentation and see if there was anything more, uh, more significant, like we might, we might change some of the headings and things like that, um, to make it look cleaner. Um, so once we get back, back this, this evening, I mean, literally tomorrow, um, I'll uh, I'll let them know of the, of some of the changes we talked about, um, and then they can remove that draft.
Great. Thank you for the hard work.
Trustee Ian.
Appreciate all the hard work that you guys have done and the persistency of the staff on this. And uh, this makes me really appreciate what you guys do and why I'm not a CPA. So appreciate it.
Trustee Teets.
Okay, I'm going to try and limit my voice here or I will lose it in about twenty minutes. Um, John asked the same question that I did regarding page twenty one. Um, the statement at the end of that section, it says, we do not express any opinion or provide any assurance on the information because the limited procedures do not provide us with sufficient evidence to express an opinion or provide any assurance. So is that the common information you were discussing about a standard vocalization of what's required per statute? Or is that their finding for our audit specifically?
Uh, yes, uh, good question again, but that is, that is standard for supplemental information. Um, what they, what they give an opinion on is the basic financial statements, which is the statements themselves and the notes. Supplemental information, they don't, whereas they, they review it, they don't, they don't give an opinion on it. And that, and that is standard. That's not, that's not something uh, special for this town. That, that, that part is pretty boilerplate.
Perfect. That was what I wanted to verify. Um, all in all, I'm exceedingly grateful that we are finally to a point where we have a draft to look at. I am looking forward to seeing the full final product come before the trustees, so the town can actually have a financial footing from twenty twenty one. I'm looking forward to the, the following ones with a new company that hopefully we can see this turnaround a lot quicker without so many additional errors and issues. I realize you were not involved in anything previous to this, but I am exceedingly grateful for all the efforts, Don, you've put into moving the town forward with this financial document. I think it it will help project going forward in the future. So I'm very grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work and uh, sticking with it and making sure we got our draft and got it back from them. I know that was quite a task for quite a while. Um, so I appreciate that and this looks great and I can't wait to see it further. And thank you for putting all the groundwork in place for future finance directors and um, get things squared away for us, Don. Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Clerk, will you please read the consent agenda, please? Do you want March twenty six, twenty twenty four, regular meeting minutes? Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please? Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Mason? Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and the consent agenda is approved.
Thank you.
Uh, next, we will proceed on to action items. First one is going to be Resolution fifteen, twenty twenty four, uh, waiving land use application fees for hardship and it will be presented by Mr. Cody Byrd.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Cody Byrd, Planning Director. Um, I have a pretty unique request uh, to bring before the Board tonight. Um, and I, you've probably read the memo, so you know that it, it is a little bit unique. Um, but it's not the only time we get this type of a request. Um, the town received an application for a non-conforming use review for a residential property. Um, and as you probably read in the staff report, I have absolutely no intention of giving you any of the particular circumstances involved in this individual's request. That's kind of a private matter and we didn't want to make a public spectacle of it, of their personal information. Um, but I want to assure you that town staff had several conversations with the owner. Their concerns are legitimate. There's a legitimate need in hardship. And they have asked for consideration for waiving the application fee of five hundred dollars for the non-conforming use review. Um, town staff supports that, but we don't have the authority to waive a fee of, that has been established by the Board of Trustees. So we brought this to you tonight to make that request to see if the Board was willing to consider uh, waiving or at least reducing if there's a desire, we can certainly talk about that. Our recommendation is to waive the five hundred dollar fee. And we've brought forth this draft resolution that would enable staff to do that if you approve. The other piece that we would like to talk about too is because of the timeliness of certain applications, we certainly want to advance an applicant's uh, goals and submitting that application. We want to get a timely review. We've actually already completed all the review for this, this uh, particular request um, tonight. Um, and we're just seeking the fee waiver. Um, but these questions come up and in order to timely address them, coming before the Board with a resolution and, and asking for that approval isn't always the most effective means and it does create kind of a public uh, event out of it that may not always be necessary. Um, so particularly, we'd like to seek approval of the, the uh, resolution, uh, number fifteen dash twenty twenty four for this certain application. But we'd also like to suggest that this is probably a conversation, it's a policy conversation of the Board to help enable um, a clean, smooth process for future considerations. And the process that staff used in this particular request, we evaluated the timeliness of the application, the relative need, um, the assets and liabilities of the individual compared to the application fee. Um, there's, there's absolutely a good set of criteria that we've evaluated and could be used in any instance moving forward to make sure that there's a legitimate need and that it's appropriate for that waiver. Um, as a policy consideration, we could also put in addition to some checkboxes for evaluation, um, there could be some limits posed on that, like a maximum amount to be waived or percentage reduction um, for those instances to give staff some administrative authority, whether it's the Planning Director, the Town Administrator, um, or some other designee, um, an ability to review this, sort of like our hardship utility grant for our utilities. So that when those instances do come up, we've got a, a clean process and a clear process for an applicant to know what they can expect. Um, so that's kind of in a nutshell, uh, what I wanted to bring forward to you tonight. We are seeking approval of the waiver. We would love to bring back additional information um, for policy considerations in the future. And so those two things kind of combined here, um, if you have suggestions on what types of policy considerations you want staff to evaluate and bring back, we're happy to do that. And the action before you is just the resolution if you approve. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Trustee Mason?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Byrd. I, I would certainly entertain a uh, policy discussion. I'm um, uh, unfortunately, without, without a whole lot of details, I don't, if, there's not, not a lot I can say uh, as far as that goes, but certainly I would entertain a, a policy discussion as far as that goes, but.
Trustee Daly?
Um, I remember when we were setting up the HUG grant, so for people who don't know what that means, it's a hardship utility grant. So if you're struggling with your utility bills, you can request for up to three hundred dollars in a calendar year, um, for your, your utility bill. Um, for a uh, acknowledged and um, actually reported hardship. And we made a very non um, objective process in which to do that, so that we're not uh, making decisions of what we consider a hardship or uh, comparing one person versus another. You know, each that the process in which was created, I think was fair and kind, um, and was taking care of Wellington. Um, and I'm really proud that we did that. So I do not see um, why a similar kind of process or policy wouldn't be applied to other um, opportunities for Wellington to, to help its residents, especially when they're going through a process in order to follow the rules. A lot of people will bypass rules if they're going through a hardship or um, worried about participating because of an inability to pay. So um, and then the rules are, of course, are designed to help people be safe and considerate of all neighbors in the entire community. So um, I, I'm very proud of what we've done for HUG. I would definitely want to consider this as a policy moving forward. Um, and I, and I think that administratively, this should be handled. It should never be drug in front of a public meeting by any means. That's again, going to discourage people from following rules. So uh, I, I appreciate that you brought this in, in front of us and I agree that we should consider policy moving forward too.
Trustee Gator?
Yes, so I agree with a lot of the statements that have been made already. Um, it does sound like you guys have gone through that process. You said you have criteria. I think that's important to bring back to the new Board and lay out to them. One of the things that I would suggest is possibly looking at a tiered rate, and the reason being we set fees in place because it's using tax, we're using taxpayer dollars to pay for staff, to pay for facilities, whatever it is, it's goes into approving that. And so maybe looking at like a tiered thing where two hundred and fifty dollars, you can waive two fifty and that's at the discretion of the Planning Director. And then maybe waiving up to four hundred dollars is Town Administrator. I would, my opinion, again, this new Board can discuss this, if you're going to completely waive a fee, I think that might be something where if it's going to be zero dollar pay. I think that might be something where if it's gonna be zero dollar pay, that might be something that should come back to the board. But maybe drawing it to where it's pretty close to, I think fifty dollars was our old fee or somewhere in that range. And maybe even saying up to that point, the Town Administrator can approve it as long as it meets these criteria set out. I think it's just, one of the things we don't want people to do is start abusing that and then just start have the staff flooded with, oh, well, I want to, you know, there's a difference between my property is non-conforming, I'm trying to make it conforming and I want this on my property and it doesn't follow the rules. But hey, I have a hardship, so give me this with, and so I want to make sure that there's boundaries on that. So my recommendation is when it's brought back to the board, maybe have a discussion about, do we have a tiered system, just like we do with spending, right? At this level can be approved by this person and make most of those tiers approved by the staff, so it doesn't ever have to come to the board. But if someone's like, literally like, I want to pay no dollars. Again, if the board is the one setting the fees and when someone says, I don't want to pay any money, perhaps, again, we don't, I appreciate the way this has been brought forward by staff. It doesn't need to be a public spectacle, but that might be a good time to bring back to the board, so.
And one thing I wanted to follow up on, because I appreciate that suggestion, um, there are different fees for different types of applications. And so, you know, a percentage reduction or some limits is a good conversation to bring back. And we would do that with context regarding the different uh, different types of fees. Obviously, the board has a policy of development pays its own way, so we wouldn't be looking to waive uh, you know, subdivision plat application fees. It would be limited in scope and what we would be considering. We also, one of the examples we discussed as a staff was, someone comes in and says, I wanna install a hot tub, but I can't afford the fifty dollar application fee. It's like, there, there's not a, there's not a rational nexus there between the necessity of the application to the requested fee reduction. So those are all certainly good topics that we wanted to bring back for additional consideration.
And my recommendation would be to focus on the variance process with that versus just waiving any and all planning fees. I mean, although Trustee Daly makes a really good point, we want people to follow the rules. Um, so maybe there is a thing to be said with that, but in general, I think the variance is again, something because typically that's, we've changed the code or something like that. They're trying to upgrade their house and now all of a sudden they're like, oh, my house is non-conforming. And it's like, you didn't, sometimes they cause it, sometimes they didn't, so, but yes, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Trustee Teets?
I think it's exceptionally difficult to look at this without additional information relating to the topic. Um, I feel that this is the, similar to subsidizing the fees in order to have someone be able to bring something into code. So my question would be is, is if we can afford to waive it for some, is it something that we should as a town be looking at? Is that fee schedule too high? So, and how do we get to pick and choose who is allowed to apply for that and who is not allowed to apply? Because I know some people use hot tubs for ADA and it's for muscle relaxant. They, some people use it before massage therapists come to relax muscles. So to be able to say it's a hardship, you know, I need a hot tub fee waived. Yes, in fact, it could be a hot tub that someone with an ADA exception is going to need to have access to. So I would not agree to subsidizing the, these application fees. Um, I think that if it's something that we can't afford to give hundreds, maybe thousands of dollars a year, that maybe we address the, the cost of what that fee is in the first place. I don't know if taxpayers really would feel comfortable saying, we're gonna take your tax money, but then we're gonna give it to someone who you might be applying for the same exact permit or variance, whatever the case may be. But because you can afford it, you're gonna pay full price, but the money you pay in taxes is going to go ahead and fund somebody else who can't afford it. So those are just some of my concerns related to this item and how out of hand it could be and what it could set us up for. If someone felt that they were treated unfairly when it came to approval of or denial of this item. Um, I'd be happy to look at details moving forward related to a tiered program if that even were the case. But I don't feel we should be subsidizing these fees. They're set, the way they're set for a specific reason is what was explained by Mr. Byrd at a previous meeting when we set these expenses. And it was my understanding, they shot low on some of the expenses related to these fees. So if it's not shooting low and we have a bunch of money to allocate differently, I would like to see us addressing the whole issue and not just per person issue as we give that direction to town staff. And it, yeah, I think it opens up worms everywhere. That's my personal opinion.
Thank you. Trustee Wiegand?
Think we got a lot of good ideas there, Trustee Daly, Trustee Gator and Trustee Teets. Uh, bring it back to the workshop. I think we got a lot of discussion to do here to make a good educated decision. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm all for looking at policies and things down the road for sure. Um, okay, at this time, we'll open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item?
All right, no public comment. Um, do I hear a motion on this item?
I move to approve resolution number fifteen dash twenty-twenty-four waiving land use application fees for a hardship.
Second.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Daly? Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Sorry, Trustee Teets?
I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you, Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously and the resolution is approved.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Byrd. Uh, Mr. Clerk, can you please read the title of item E-two?
Resolution number sixteen dash twenty-twenty-four, a resolution of the Town of Wellington, considering a contract for design and construction management services.
Perfect, and we have Mr. Alex Evanitz. Uh, civil engineer will be presenting on the side.
Downing may say a couple of words upfront here.
Oh, okay.
Bob Downing, Director of Public Works. Um, I just wanted to say a few brief words to start out, kind of a reminder of how we got here. Um, this project has turned into over a five million dollar project, most of which is grant funded. Uh, about four and a half million of that is grant funded and the balance coming out of fund reserves. Um, wanted to talk a little bit about the team before they get started. So Alex Evidence is, as you may know, is a project manager for this. Uh, Nathan Ewart, who's sitting all the way in the back, is gonna be managing the drainage components of it. And Sean Fetzer is our proposed consultant with J U B. We have kind of an extended staff team for community outreach and, and planning. That includes Cody Byrd, Kelly Hodling, uh, Caitlin Morris and Jerry Martin. So I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that there is a pretty big outreach effort, which hasn't started yet, but will be here soon. And it will have some experts helping us on that. So with that, I'm just gonna go ahead and turn it over to Alex.
Thanks, Bob. Board, thank you very much. Um, appreciate the support that we've got, gotten in shepherding this project from grant awards through the internet, intergovernmental agreement to the survey. And now we're at a point where we're actually gonna start producing a project in earnest with the design. Um, we went through a, a bidding package through BizNet and had six applicants based on the scope that was advertised. Uh, we interviewed the top three, uh, J U B Engineers, Inc., uh, provided the best scope understanding and best pricing associated with that scope. Uh, we have got several meetings for the public in there as well. I think it's important to remember that this is ultimately a C dot project. But the important thing is, is that, now let me go through the executive summary real quickly. A contract for design and construction management services is being presented to the Board of Trustees for the award of J U B Engineers, Engineers, Inc. The contract will start the design process for Cleveland Avenue improvements, including drainage, pedestrian safety, sidewalk and ADA improvements, bringing all that infrastructure into compliance with the current federal and state standards in Town of Wellington also, obviously. Uh, right now, uh, if there's any questions generally, I'd be more than happy to answer those. But I know at some point, uh, Sean would like to maybe say a few words about their approach to the project.
Yeah.
Yeah, Sean?
Hello. So, my name's Sean Fetzer, uh, Project Manager and was part of the, uh, leader of the proposal effort for this project. So started back in December with the RFP that came out and, and submitted that in, in January. And um, going through the process here for getting the contract approved. So um, so scope, I don't know if you guys are aware of the scope, where it's at, first to Sixth Street with, with some drainage improvements that are part of that. And very, very much a, you know, revitalization of, of downtown and, and we're excited to be a part of that. And we were excited to, to put in for it and, and uh, can't wait to start, really. Um, we're experienced in, in a lot of the uh, grant funding requirements that are part of this. So C dot, there's the oversight uh process that we have to go through and we've done many of these through, through our time. Um, and J U B as a whole, you know, we're four hundred and fifty uh people mainly situated in the northwest part of the United States. And uh, we have a lot of resources we can pull from. We've done these uh throughout the United States. Um, we've got a landscape architects, we have structure engineers, we have municipal uh water engineers, drainage engineers. Um, part of our team is icon engineers that, that did the uh, the Drainage Master Planning as well. So um, so uh, beyond the scope or schedule, um, we, we do have the uh, grant funding timelines associated with this. So uh, starting, you know, as soon as we have a signed contract and we want to have design by, by the end of the year. So October actually is our timeframe. Um, if we pull right away or, or some of those other things, it may take a little bit longer. But uh, as far as the design, that's our goal. Um, and to start building by uh, you know, end of this year, twenty-five, and, and we have to be completely done by twenty-six. So, and then uh, yeah, um, it's mainly our scope. Like I said, excited to uh, start on it. And uh, you know, we have design and construction management as, as it shows. So, you know, we, we intend to take this from beginning to, to end the construction. So, um, yeah, any, any questions?
Trustee Daly?
Uh, to think back at the beginning of this term, we were in a state of emergency, right? Um, to now, we are finally reaping the benefits of, you know, some of the positive things that occurred out of COVID. And those are being a lot of the grant funds that were being allocated to help the country in this case, uh, recover. So um, this is so important in the comprehensive plan, one of the four top pillars was uh, spoke on the vitality of our downtown and how is the heart of our community as a small town. Uh, and it represents, you know, everything that we are here. So to think of the fact that we have five million dollars that are going towards making it exactly how we want it to be. And that uh, the focus in that is engaging our residents and businesses and making it the most of what we can get or what we have with the people who are involved here right now and that you're gonna be engaging them. Um, is, I, I'm so overwhelmed with happiness. This is, this is a pivotal moment for Wellington where we get to pick who we are and how we look and how we operate and, you know, solve drainage issues at the same time. Hey, that's amazing. So um, I was impressed with everything that I saw um, in this project in general, something that's so close to my heart and I'm so very excited for our town. This is going to change our lives, so thank you. Um, question though, what is, what is your proposed methodology for engaging the public? Can you give me kind of an outline of what you expect or, or what that process looks like?
Yeah, uh, and that came up, uh, talking with the town staff here, um, Bob and Alex. Um, there, it sounds like there's new staff on the Wellington side that, that are involved with public outreach. We do have public outreach in our scope and that's, you know, putting flyers out, going door to door and people that live right next to uh, Main Street there, Cleveland. And um, you know, there's two public houses that we have in our scope as well. So we have renderings and, and uh, you know, different graphics uh prepared for that. Um, and so we'll continue that and continue mailings. And I know as far as keeping you guys informed, you know, there's, there's right away and, and construction contracts, it'll be part of that too, so.
Something that, that Sean doesn't know. Um, we uh, we are planning on bringing back the kind of outreach plan in a, in a work session um, here in May. So to get, to get the board's feedback, public's feedback and see feedback is a very important part of this project. And so we'll be uh, searching for feedback, you know, constantly as we go. There is a point in the project where kind of need to define the scope because we, it's hard to absorb too many changes once you get past thirty percent design, say. So we'll be working closely with outreach team to kind of make sure both sides kind of come together for that.
And I love that this is such a focus and such a priority. So I, I mean, you've made me feel very good about the process, so thank you, thank you very much.
Trustee Gator?
Yes, I actually do have a couple um, for Sean. Um, one, just you had mentioned that there's two public houses in the scope of work of the project. Could you break down what that entails, meaning it's in the scope?
Yeah, there's still a lot to be decided, I think, on that, you know, where it is, you know, and down that, you know, having stations for everybody so they can get a lot of one-on-one uh, time with staff and consultants. Um, I mean, I, I still think that's something we really gotta work out the details a bit more on that, but.
Okay, I guess let me clarify, when you say that there's two public houses that are in the scope, meaning two houses that will be affected by the construction?
No, I'm sorry.
Meaning like we're tearing out their yards or what is that, what does that mean?
I was, uh, yeah, different, different there. Um, so I was thinking, yeah, um, open houses being, all this public outreach meetings that would be.
That, that, that's great, that's awesome, okay.
Right here, yeah.
I was just really confused, I was like, wait, it's like, okay, that's great. Cause we actually have residences on the Main Street, I was like, I feel like there's more than two. Thank you, thank you for clarifying that, I, I appreciate, yeah, I am one of those, I also, so I was like, is there something I should know? Um, the other question I did have, there were several optional items under the contract. Who makes that determination as to what, do we use those? Does that staff makes that determination, does that come back to the board? Um, how do those optional items work?
Those are included in the contract award, it's similar to a contingency, which, you know, you guys have seen on the plant projects. We don't know exactly how the project's gonna go, there's a lot of unknowns still. We have the survey information, but we haven't really got started design yet. So as, as we go, we may or may not need to exercise some of those. We also hope to get a little bit more involved in the construction inspection than um, to save money on the backend. So it, it'd be an effort of managing the consultant's effort in conjunction with staff, staff's efforts to, to meet that budget and typically beat it, which is what we, we'll beat it in terms of coming under.
Got over, okay.
Um, which is always our goal.
Be, okay, so basically we're approving the contract for eight hundred ninety-eight thousand nine hundred fourteen. And of that, four hundred eighty-five thousand is the base design and then the additional items may or may not be used throughout.
Well, there are two different phases of the project. There's the design phase and then the construction phase.
Okay.
And the construction phase stuff has to be set up in a very rigid prescribed way in order to enable the grant reimbursements, right? So there's a lot of, an amazing amount of data that has to be crunched. So really two separate phases, so there's, and they happen in a lot in, in order, you know, in time. Design comes first and then the construction management.
But we're being asked to approve the entirety of the eight ninety-eight nine fourteen.
We are asking that.
Okay, perfect, we just, normally we have a, a number on that, so I would just request we amend that to say the amount that we're approving on the contract to say that it's the full eight ninety-eight, just because that was a little confusing for me.
I, I apologize.
That's okay.
I noticed that when I was sitting in the back there looking at the agenda.
We've had it before, so I think it's weird, there's no, and then I was like, okay, so thank you for clarifying.
You need to have that number in there.
Perfect, that was my question, thank you.
Trustee Teets?
I'm super excited about this, mainly because of the fact that this has been a discussion for many residents for a very long time. Um, one of the questions I have is related to ADA allocations in your design and implementation. Is there cost included for all of the additional ADA considerations and meetings that might come up along the way?
Yeah, certainly. Um, as we know, there's a few places in town where the ADA requirements are not currently being met. Um, we're aware of those, uh, J U B is aware of those and that was one of the reasons we had the survey done initially. And that was one of the reasons we had the survey done initially. With those being identified, they will be certainly addressed, all the ADA ramps as well as sidewalk width requirements. Those are coming through CDOT primarily. And those are part of the design criteria going forward and will remain so.
Got it. I noticed that there's no structural design cost in here. It's not included in this contract amount. Do you suspect there is additional structural design?
At this time, no. Primarily we're looking into surface design, civil surface design where it's sidewalk, curb and gutter drainage. Repaving, CDOT was nice enough to give us another million dollars for repaving at the same time, which is also part of the funding opportunity that we have from them. So, yeah, shouldn't be an issue, I don't believe.
Got it. And I noticed that when someone had made a mention about the public outreach, there's $35,678 included for public outreach. So I just make a mention in a note that I am hoping we have the community outreach meetings to allocate for almost $36,000 of public outreach. The last and final question, the contingency is only set at 45,000. Is there a reason that the contingency is so low?
I wouldn't say it's necessarily low. I think because of the fact that we had written the request for proposals in such a manner and were able to provide the existing survey conditions completed by a licensed professional surveyor, that certainly did help with the design and giving J U B a better understanding going forward. With regard to the cost for public engagement, we're going to do everything we can. We recognize that this is a legacy type project for town. We won't get this opportunity again for, who knows, 20 years maybe. So trying to get as much input as we can and try and satisfy people to the degree that we can. But ultimately it is still a CDOT design. We certainly do have influence, but it will meet the CDOT standards in terms of their design requirements. We hope to get a lot of input, honestly. There are several things that we, it's more of a character type thing. Really, what does the downtown character want to look like for the future? Is this going to look like that for a while? And so do we look more traditional? Do we look a little more contemporary? I don't know exactly which way we're going to go. I could assume probably a little more traditional. But we don't know that until we get maybe more community input.
Got it. Have you guys thought about the processes that you're going to do community input on? Is there a list of targeted approaches that you guys are going to do or is that just tentative?
Yeah, we're working with Kelly and Caitlin and Jerry on that right now. We just had a meeting yesterday on that very same topic. And we're still building what we believe is going to be the best approach to engage the public. We'll probably, and this is, don't quote me on this, sometime toward the middle of May possibly would be our first engagement, at least the way it's currently anticipated. At that point, we should have a reasonable idea of the direction that we're going with design options. And so anytime past that, when we get to 30% of a design completed, it's more expensive and timely to make revisions at that point. So we're trying to get as much engagement early in the program as we can to try and avoid any kind of design changes when things really start getting more detailed.
Awesome. Perfect. Those were my questions. I thank you very much and welcome to, I want to say that J, J U B?
Correct.
Perfect. Yep. Nope. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wigan.
Couple of questions. First off, when are you looking at actually breaking ground?
Some of it's going to depend on weather. As Sean had mentioned, we'll probably have the design sometime in maybe September, October roughly, based on the schedule. We'll have to go through the advertising process for contractors, take a while to put that together. We'll get the advertisement out. We'll probably give a minimum, probably three to four weeks for review or a bid opening. We could possibly, again, weather dependent, break some ground toward the end of 24. More than likely it will be early spring of 25.
So you shouldn't have too much weather delay at that point, hopefully.
Yeah. We hope so.
Okay. Well, I'm excited to see our downtown get brought up to the same standards that most of the other towns in the surrounding communities have. And that's going to make such a difference for our town. And, you know, one thing that I think we definitely need, and I know you guys have discussed it and you're thinking about it all the time, is access to our businesses. I was living in Fort Collins when they did Drake and I saw it kill a bunch of businesses when they did that. So, I mean, we have to be very recognize what it's doing, working with the businesses all the time, working with the city. So we have access to the businesses, maybe alternatives. So, I mean, it's got to be, I think, a constant communication with them. And I believe you guys already got plans for that.
Yeah, we do. Right now with regard to the sidewalks, there's going to be no changes. The entry points will stay the same in terms of grade. With regard, I think we have two businesses that do have steps up. We will, I think, Seal Cakery and the Owl. We'll make the accommodations that we can with the space allowed. But we don't know exactly what that will look like yet. But we're going to be, the biggest thing is the drainage. So the curb and gutter is going to wave a little bit to get some so we can get the water the heck out of here, which is a problem now. So there's going to be some changes in the curb and gutter heights. But the sidewalk at the threshold of the businesses will remain the same. I think it's important to recognize this is construction. There's going to be some inconvenience. And we're going to honestly make our best effort with our staff and with the consultants and the future contractor to reduce those to the extent absolutely possible. Small businesses need that kind of support.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Mason.
Well, I just want to thank you guys, Director Gowing, Mr. Evidence, Mr. Ewart, Mr. Fetzer, and certainly all the rest of the staff that's been involved. This is very exciting stuff and obviously the fact that this is almost entirely grant funded is, is very cool stuff for the community. So I did want to highlight just a couple of things. Certainly, obviously parking on Cleveland's always been kind of a questionable thing. So I just want to make sure that was drawn to everybody's attention. I'm sure you guys are well aware already. But I think the residents are going to be very excited to have some of these swimming pools off of Cleveland. So very cool stuff. Very excited to see the initial designs and obviously keep the board posted as far as things go. But I'm excited to get this going.
Appreciate that. We shall.
Yeah, thank you guys very much. Very excited for this project. Everybody else has already said everything that I would say. So appreciate you guys. Now would be time for public comment on this item.
Hi Karen Eifert, I live in the Knolls. I'm really grateful that this is finally going to start happening. But I'm a little confused because when it was first talked about, I remember Mr. Gowing saying something about that it would include the ADA for the sidewalks and for the access for the wheelchairs at the crosswalks and things like that. And now I just heard, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Alex, I just heard Alex say that it will not include sidewalks. And so that's a concern for me because if we don't have the right access on the sidewalks, like a wheelchair might have a harder time getting around when some of those cracks that are really bad and some of the other parts that are really slick and stuff because of the drainage that's coming. I don't know if it's, probably the drainage from the buildings. I don't know for sure. But also I think I came in here before and I showed my son walking next to me. I have to fully support him with two hands on him and then put my leg next to him so that if he tries to kick out, I can block him from kicking. But the reason we haven't been able to do any walking around downtown is because those sidewalks are so bad that he trips on those and he wears orthotics that come up to his knees. They articulated the ankle. I mean, he's basically like bionic ankle right now. And he still has a very rough time navigating the sidewalks in downtown. We used to walk all around. We used to go visit Kelly DeVries and her shop and some of the other shops around. We had a great time with it, but as it got worse and worse with the sidewalks, it made it impossible. And also the grades, when you do cross it across walk, the way that those are done now, it's, it's not ADA compliant. And it makes it really hard for him to like walk off of the curb or down a supposed curve curbed and gain access to the road. We actually have to lift him over a lot of that part and he's about 100 pounds second wet. So, you know, I'm getting older and it's not easy to lift 100 pounds on a spur of the moment. But I was really hopeful with this project that it would be, as it was before said, that this would take care of the sidewalks ADA, the access to the road ADA and those things. And so I'm very concerned about Alex's comment that that will not be happening with this. And I don't know. I don't know what can be done at this point. I know that you guys haven't done the design yet. But I sure would like you to get involved, maybe Ark of Laramo County. And that would be David is the president right now. And he would be able to contact you and talk with you about ADA compliance for businesses and for town access and what the American with Disabilities Act lays out has to be done in a town for it to meet that ADA requirement. Because just fixing the road and the curbs is not giving ADA compliance for people who have a disability with walking or with wheelchair. It has to include where they're going to be walking as well, which would be the sidewalks. And I know that there's a lot of really amazing grants that David might have access to as well. Like he's a really good point of contact, but to help towns to do those upgrades. And if we can secure some funding to help do that before you guys start the planning stage, gosh, that'd be amazing. It'd just be so great to have that access for my son and for other people, people in wheelchairs as well and people with cerebral palsy. Lifting your foot, just a tiny little quarter of an inch is very extremely hard and painful for some people. And I think that we should make the accommodations so that all people can enjoy downtown, not just the people who don't have disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, please address that, Mr. Gowing.
Sorry for the confusion. We will absolutely meet all ADA requirements for every piece of public infrastructure in this project. We do this for every project. It's not between the four engineers involved with this. We have over 100 years of experience designing ADA accessible sidewalks and ramps and everything else. So that is part of the project. So I just want to make sure that that's clear and sorry for the confusion.
Thank you. Okay, no more further comment there. Do I hear a motion on the sidewalk?
Yes, a clarifying question on the sidewalk. So would it be correct to understand that we're not changing the sidewalks necessarily adjacent to the buildings? But if our sidewalks are not ADA compliant, we will be doing work on those to make.
That's what Alex was getting towards.
Okay. The business won't be changing this.
Yes.
But the sidewalks themselves will be adjusted to meet.
Everything from storefront to storefront basically will be ADA compliant and will drain and be durable and meet CDOT standards.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion on this item?
I will move to approve resolution 16 dash 2024, resolution for the town of Wellington, considering a contract for design and construction management services with J U B and the amount of 898,914.
Second.
Are there any further deliberations?
One quick comment, I do want to just acknowledge the Main Street program and their contribution to this project and give them a big thank you.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
I'm sorry. Wait.
Oh, did you have your hand raised?
Yes, I had one further comment. I want to make sure to point out, and I hope that this helps relieve some Ms. Eifert's concerns. But I know when we first started discussing this, the board was in total support of including David with ARC or setting up kind of a steering ADA committee related to the accessibility. I want to make sure that that's something that's still being discussed, looked at, related to the inclusion of having that feedback.
Absolutely. We do have a landscape architect as part of the program as well. So those kinds of features are things that at this point we really can't address because we don't know where we are in terms of the final design selection. But they certainly are on our minds. Again, this is going to be a long-term fix. And knowing that, we're trying to put our best effort to not missing some of those minor steps that could probably easily be overlooked. We're avoiding that to the best extent we can.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and the resolution is approved.
Thank you. We'll now take a five-minute recess and re-adjourn afterwards.
7:40 PM. Mr. Clerk, please take a roll call.
Trustee Mason?
Here.
Trustee Daly?
Present.
Trustee Teets?
Here.
Trustee Wigan?
Here.
Trustee Gator?
Here.
Mayor Shosse?
Here.
Thank you. We still have a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, may you?
Well, how about this? Now will be resolution item E3, resolution for the town of Wellington, and I will title it.
Mr. Mayor, can I get a point of order regarding this agenda item? Per the Colorado Open Meetings Law, I do believe any agenda item that is for consideration, specifically the resolution in front of us. And if there is to be a motion on this tonight, the item must be posted for both board and public consideration at least 24 hours before a public meeting. Perhaps Mr. Sapienza can weigh in.
Mr. Sapienza.
Trustee Mason, as this item was introduced, my, the first thing I was going to say is recommend an executive, a brief executive session of the board to discuss issues around notice in this resolution item. If the board would entertain a brief executive session, I think it can be handled in just a few minutes to provide legal advice regarding notice requirements and this resolution. Because we have a full house here, I think asking everybody to leave for just a couple of minutes would be rather unreasonable. And so we've, I've actually already reached out to the library director. And I think if the board could recess into the library for a couple of minutes for an executive session, recess is the wrong word. If the board could go into the library for a couple of minutes for an executive session and we could also call Trustee Teets on the phone so she can participate in that as well. That way we can hold, we could hold an executive session outside of the, outside of this room without requiring everybody to leave. So that would be my recommendation and I have a motion ready. Would like to do that.
Do I hear a motion on the executive session?
I move that we enter executive session.
All second.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Oh. Mr. Mayor, there's some specific language that.
Yes.
Let's go for it.
For the purposes of conferences with an attorney for the town pursuant to section CRS, section 2464024B, for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding notice requirements for consideration of election item added as agenda item E3, the executive session will not be recorded and an attorney certification will be provided as required by CRS, section 2464022D.52B that the discussion that in the executive session constitute privileged attorney-client communications. So that would be the motion.
So moved.
All second.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
No.
Trustee Teets?
No.
Trustee Wigan?
No.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Okay. No, be that concession. Okay, so I'll.
Still have a point of order from.
Point of order for Trustee Mason. Okay, can you repeat your point of order for me, please?
Yeah, per the Colorado Open Meetings Law, any item that is up for consideration and especially if we're going to have a motion on this, certainly there is a plethora of pages here that I have not had a chance to read. I don't believe most of the board has had a chance to read and certainly the public has not had a chance to read. These items must be posted at least 24 hours before a public meeting. So, and this is certainly not in emergency resolution. So I would say that this is out of order.
Do I hear a motion on it being out of order? No.
It's a point of order.
It's a point of order. He says it's out of order. Okay, my goodness.
I, I don't know if I'm allowed to give a quick comment. This is very unusual that we would receive this in this method where we didn't receive it in a packet. The community didn't receive it in a packet.
The community didn't receive it in a packet. And for my under, has this gone through a legal review, this resolution before us?
I'm, I'm happy to speak to this.
I mean, I, this is unusual. We've never, we've never. Done this before, for a good reason, I think, for that purpose of notice and for review. So I am not comfortable moving forward until it's properly. Advertised.
Mayor, I have my hand raised, as I would like to point out that this information was sent to all of us. As trustees last week.
No, it was not, Trustee Teets.
I received all of the information.
I'm happy to clarify.
Yeah.
So I had brought this up as an item, so our policy has been as a board that any two members of the board may add an item to the agenda. The reason being is our board follows Robert's Rules of Order. All of Robert's Rules of Order requires is a motion and a second. And an item is discussed. Now, there can be a motion to remove an item. Um, but that is what Robert's Rules of Order says, which is why we've had the policy, any two trustees can add an item to the agenda. The reason being so that information may be provided ahead of time to the entire board, to the public for everyone to review. So I sent an email to Ms. Garcia on Wednesday of last week. And copied Trustee Teets on that, saying we'd like to add this for consideration. We submitted the packet information to Mr. Sapienza, to Ms. Garcia on Thursday evening. And then I was informed on Friday evening.
Received it Friday.
I sent it Thursday evening. I understand you got it Friday morning. I sent it Thursday evening. Yes, it was late. When I re, when I got home, I finished sending it. Um, so the information was sent in the packet that you have in front of you to town attorney, to the town administrator. On Thursday evening. I received an email from the town administrator Friday afternoon or morning. Um, informing that Mayor Shosse had chosen to remove the item from the agenda, which is not something we have ever had before. Um, there is a process in a meeting that an item can be removed from consideration. That's a vote of the whole board, not of one member. That is the reason, um, that this item was not in your packet was from the decision of Mayor Shosse to remove said item. So myself and Trustee Teets did send this out to the staff. I did not send it to the entire board. As that would not be the appropriate process. So this information was intended to be in everyone's hand and in the public's hands with the regular packet. Yes. Yeah, and the uh. That's all, that's all correct information to the best of my knowledge. Um, I deemed it out of order due to the fact that we are currently still in the election. The election has not been finalized. It will not be finalized until Friday. Um, I deemed it out of order because of the fact that we were using information from the current election that has still not been finished. Um, and I don't know as though we should be considering something from the election that has not been finalized yet for consideration at this time. In my email, I stated the better time for this would be in May or June to look at this item. Uh, so it was deemed out of order due to the fact that we are still in an election and. That's out of order and I will stand behind that decision. So I do want to make the point that this resolution is not about the current election. It's about future elections and that's the reason. And as I understand, Robert's Rules of Order, things being in order or out of order has to do with is there a proper motion and a second for an item for consideration? There is an objection to consideration of a question, which is we don't think this is appropriate. That is very different from an item being out of order. An item, item being out of order is it actually violates something within Robert's Rules of Order. Which are our rules of order that we have adopted as a board. And so if you have a ruling on Robert's Rules of Order of how the item is out of order, that's great. Otherwise, it would be a objection to the consideration of a question, which would be. You don't think it's appropriate to discuss and that would be an appropriate motion, again, to be put to the whole board.
Go ahead, Mr. Sapienza.
I think that's a correct assessment of Robert's Rules. In this case, the, the point of order was regarding open meetings law. Um, under Colorado statutes, um, any, any act, a policy act of a board or any governing body that has passed. Without, and I actually would say this in executive session, but it is adopted without proper notice, and that's without twenty-four hours notice to the public. Um, could be avoided in court. Um, you, a, an action on an item that wasn't given public notice and whether, for the reason for that. Is somewhat irrelevant to the statute. Um, there was no public notice to this item, therefore the public is not on notice that elections will be discussed tonight. Um, so under the open meeting law, I would highly recommend that the board not take formal action on this item. A, a discussion of the item could take place, but no formal action should take place, is my recommendation.
Thank you. So, uh, Trustee Gator, do you want to? Oh, Trustee Teets? Trustee Teets?
Um, yes, so my question relates to, is there a way that we can? Notice this item and then bring it back under a special meeting this week? Is that an opportunity to notify public but also address the concerns?
That is an option. I think that what would be appropriate is we have discussion as a board and board members can discuss the packet that's in front of us and. We have our advice from legal counsel as to what the requirements of law are and then the board can make an appropriate decision. I'd be happy to actually introduce the item so that everyone's clear on what exactly I'm recommending.
That answered your question.
It does, and I'm amicable to that if that's something that the board agrees to.
Yeah, uncompletely. Okay, so Trustee Gator will present. This item.
Thank you, Mayor Shosse. All right, so Mayor Shosse and Board of Trustees and members of the public, the first thing that I wanted to begin by making clear. Is this item has nothing to do with me challenging an election, with me saying anything about results of an election at all. I am not challenging our election. I'm not saying anything was done that was wrong. I believe we have professional staff. I believe they have integrity. I believe we have professional election judges. Who also have integrity and I believe they acted in such manner. So I want to make that very clear. What I saw and what you'll see in the packet as you go through it, I emailed this to you as well. Um, I emailed it to Mr. Moose if he wants to put it on the screen so public can actually follow along with us. Um, there were items of note that were brought forward by some of the poll watchers in the election. That were concerning, not because things that were done that were wrong, but because there were gaps that could allow. Future people to say, hey, there's something wrong with our election processes. And so the resolution itself is talking about supporting election integrity and security. And really, my goal is I'd love for this town to not go down the route. That we see on a national level where people are saying, well, this election wasn't valid or that election wasn't valid. We have talked a lot on this board about how important it is to have the vote of the citizens and for the citizens to feel that their vote counts and matters. And I feel that it's something that's one of our jobs is to say, hey, we need to be very careful about how we deal with our citizens' vote and we protect those. And so what this resolution looks to do is it looks to say, here are some of the things, and most of these are actually items that are directly from Colorado state statute. Um, there's a few that are not and I have those notated, but almost all of these come from state statute. Basically, Colorado state statute sets very broad rules for local municipalities. And there's good reasons for that, right? Because if you require local municipalities to have, you know, tens of thousands of dollars or hundreds of thousands of dollars in election materials, that's ridiculous to. Assume a municipality of five hundred people can manage that. So there's good reasons for that, but then there are also some protections that are just. I would say very common sense that are required of state elections and county elections. And so what my recommendation is, is that this board consider. Saying, hey, we would like to adopt on ourselves to say, here are some minimum rules that we will put on ourselves. We understand that state statute doesn't require these, but we think these are valid rules. And then the resolution also says, we should forward a recommendation to the next board that they take a look at this. And then they adopt this in, in ordinance to actually put it with our election laws. So that everyone knows these are the election rules that Wellington has chosen to follow. Um, so that's the point of the resolution is to say, hey, there are areas that could cause concern to residents. We can easily address those and my goal is really this to be something that we can talk about and discuss if there's any area on this. If we feel as a board it's not appropriate for us to take action, I would love to see us forward this to the next board and say, hey, we think this should be something you should consider seriously to adopt or even. Postpone this to a, a meeting of the next board, having had some of the discussion on that. So I'll just walk through, um, the rules. So members of the public, if you're unable to see, I'll walk through all these rules. Um, of the actual municipal election rules. Actually, let me read the resolution so no one's wondering what it actually says. A resolution of the town of Wellington, Colorado, supporting election integrity and security. Whereas the Board of Trustees wants the citizens of Wellington to have confidence in municipal elections. Whereas the Board of Trustees desires transparency, security and integrity of elections. Whereas Colorado Municipal Code CRS thirty-one dash ten provides a basic framework for municipal elections. But lacks details on election procedures. Whereas Colorado Election Rules eight, CCR fifteen oh five dash one. Provides a better framework for election security and integrity for state and county elections. Whereas the town of Wellington desires to adopt some of the Colorado election rules that apply to Wellington to ensure the integrity of elections. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the town of Wellington, Colorado as follows. The Board of Trustees hereby enact these minimum election rules for future municipal elections. And pass a recommendation to the next Board of Trustees to adopt these election rules into the Wellington Municipal Code. Chapter one or chapter two, Article one, elections with changes as they see fit. Upon a motion duly made, seconded and carried, the foregoing resolution was adopted this ninth day of April twenty twenty-four. So that is the resolution. Um, and then terms of.
One, one, one point of order real quick.
Yeah.
Um, with all of the rules that are listed. Would you be able to summarize that?
I'll, I'll roll through this quickly. Yes, sir. Yeah, that's, that's what I'm going to do right now. Um, so basically what the rules say is the clerk will follow these basic rules and can enact whatever additional rules they see fit. So it doesn't say the clerk can't adopt more rules. It just says, hey, these are the minimum that must be used. Add to that as you need to, to run your election. Um, so rules look at, um, first thing it says applies to any municipal or special election. Um, one item on there talks about having a physical poll book that is on site at the counting facility that is available to election watchers. Um, voter names being announced by election judges as they notate receiving their ballot. Access to the counting facility, this is one of the big ones, is basically just says that no one should have access to the counting facility outside of the scheduled processing hours. Except for emergency personnel responding to an emergency situation. Um, and then no one may enter the facility alone. So if, if someone's going to be in the counting facility where ballots are, there should always be at least two people. And again, it's just that accountability. If you never have one person alone with ballots, there's never any reason to question anything. Because there's always someone else there that can say exactly what you did and didn't do. Um, and this does, um, line up with Colorado Election Rule twenty dash twenty point four point four A point one C. Um, and then just another rule, the clerk must notify candidates of scheduled changes of processing ballots. So just if we're changing days or times, making sure that notifications go out. Um, there's one about if voters inadvertently return their ballots. So for example, if I accidentally send my ballot back and my, I sign my wife's envelope and she signs mine. And the judges look at that and they can reasonably say, hey, this is, they just flipped their ballots. They don't have to go back and cure that. That is straight from Colorado Election Rule seven point seven point six. Um, and then a designated watcher does not have to be a resident of the town. They are designated as long as they're an eligible elector in the state of Colorado. That's Colorado Election Rule eight point one point four. Um. The surveillance of secure areas, uh, is Colorado Election Rule twenty point four point two. Um, and that goes through basically saying we should have video surveillance of the area where ballots are going to be managed and maintained. Uh, we also have access logs to the secured area. That's Colorado Election Rule twenty point four point three. And it basically just says the clerk must maintain a log of every person who enters accounting facility. And then what must be maintained within that. When did they enter? Who were they? When did they leave, et cetera? And again, that comes straight from the Colorado Election Rules. Um, when ballot processing is not actively occurring, the designated election official must seal and store ballots. And opened and unopened return envelopes in a secure ballot area. And that's Colorado Election Rule twenty point seven point two B. And basically that just says that whenever we aren't actively working on ballots, they need to be in a secured area. Um, so I know in our last election, we had a room that was closed, locked and sealed and the election judge has actually signed the seal. And the next morning, everyone came back, made sure the seal was still on the door and then they opened up, took the ballots back out and got back to work. Um, and again, that's straight from Colorado Election Rule. Um, tally sheets of counted votes must be signed by bipartisan teams of judges. So typically how votes are counted, they're counted in stacks of, I think, twenty-five. Usually they're counted and then they'll put, write a tally sheet of how many votes are on that. Um, in county elections, those are signed by the judges that did the counting to ensure that no one accidentally changes the sheet out or whatever. So just make sure those are actually signed. Um, uh, next rule is a bipartisan team of election judges and or staff must seal all ballot boxes and envelopes that contain voted ballots. So that no person can access the ballots without breaking a seal. Um, and then just they have to record those seals in a chain of custody log. So basically, you've counted the ballots, that needs to be sealed and then there needs to be logged in a chain of custody. The town must maintain and document uninterrupted chain of custody for each ballot storage container. So where those ballots are sealed, we have to maintain chain of custody. Where did they go? Who had them? And need to show that that's uninterrupted. Um, and then the lot, final item on there is a post-action, post-election audit should be conducted. It goes through the process of that and that again is Colorado Election Rule twenty-five that highlights that. And so those are all of the summary of the rules. So I'd love to have discussion if there are any rules that members of the board have concerns with. I'd love to discuss what those rules should or shouldn't be. And again, if we're going to forward a recommendation to the next board to consider this item, why don't we at least forward them what rules we think are or are not appropriate?
Thank you. Trustee Wigan? Trustee Mason?
Sure, so certainly I don't think anybody has any questions about our elections being secure. Uh, that's, that's kind of a no-brainer, right? Um, all of these are mostly Colorado election rules, state statutes. So I guess I'm, I would be somewhat confused as to why we would need to adopt some of these considering they're already state statute. I would also highlight the point that I had brought up a number of meetings back, which was. That I would very much like to see our elections coordinated with Laramo County and I think there was some discussion about bringing this to a ballot item in November. In which case, uh, most of these points are moot. So. Um. Certainly, I would look forward to having a deeper dive on this, but. Considering I've had about ten minutes here to look at this. Uh. I don't have a whole lot of discussion at this time.
I'd like to answer your question about the, these being Colorado law and, um, Colorado has multiple election codes. Um, and, and Trustee Gator and I have discussed this and, and. The town, uh, follows the election code. It's the Local Election Act. It's in Title thirty-one. These Colorado election rules that are mentioned here and anywhere where it mentions Title One, Title One is elections. That's a Colorado wide statutes. These Colorado election rules only apply to elections that are held under Title One by the county. And so anywhere where it says these are already state law or there is a Colorado rule, um, Trustee Gator is not saying. We should already be following these. I think the, the point was, these are rules that have been adopted for state-level elections and at the county, so maybe we should do those at the, at the local level too. And in some cases, that may be possible. I mean, and I, I have not gone through these in detail and, um, and we discussed that last week that. Go, go, I could go through what I could go through. Um, in some cases, that might be possible. In some cases, it isn't. And, and the town of Wellington is not a home rule municipality, so we don't have any option but to follow Title thirty-one. I, we could vote to then go to a, a coordinated election where it's run by, by the county, but as long as the town is running it, we don't have an option. We have to abide by Title thirty-one. So, so the suggestion here is to adopt additional rules that still comply with Title thirty-one that are not required at the moment. Um, that, that's the idea here, but it's, it's, it's important to note, there's two very different laws. So where this says it's already required by Title One. That doesn't apply to us. Um, it's more a suggestion that we adopt additional rules that would be that way.
Yeah, and, uh, thank you for the clarification, Mr. Sapienza. Um, certainly, I, 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 there's, there's certain ones on here that certainly I'm, I am not opposed to adopting. Uh, maybe many of them are, uh, very well. Uh, something I'd be willing to consider, but we, honest to goodness, with ten minutes here to review these, I would want more time. To go back through these, look them over thoroughly, uh, before this is brought for a resolution.
Trustee Wigan?
I think during the last election, definitely want to thank our city clerk. He, I think he did a great job. But one thing this does is gives a better framework. I think you had to go in there and. You know, you'd never ran an election before. You did a dang good job. This gives a base and a framework, just like what you were talking. There's a lot of good ideas that we can incorporate it into our. Town ordinance or however we want to do that and, uh, again, make it. Where there is no confusion. Uh, as far as any and all people where they think there was problems, it's going to eliminate everything. So again, I think we need to look at it. Again, integrity is everything. We want to make sure that no vote gets disenfranchised and, uh, I think it's a no-brainer. Thank you.
Trustee Teets?
Yes, and I'm grateful for Trustee Gator bringing this. Um, not happy about the way that all of the steps were handled in order to bring this to the trustees. Um, I did, again, argue that I felt the necessity of these items being discussed was very important. And I support Trustee Gator in wanting to address things that were definite issues, in my opinion. I was actually able to be a poll watcher for this election to see how these. This whole election process. election process ran. I've never had an opportunity to do such. And I do know some of those concerns are directly from my questions that came out of my poll watching, related to transportation of ballots from poll boxes from town staff and not judges. And I get it, the Title 31 grants local municipalities their right to have certain election rules. The main understanding, and one of the reasons I supported this coming forward, was because this wasn't to question or challenge the election process. I verified that with Trustee Gator before I seconded this. It was the idea that while things may not have gone exactly according to plan, there are ways to make this process more transparent, to secure it more for the future. When Trustee Gator spoke to me about this, his whole passion behind it was making sure that elections were secure. Election integrity is never moot. Points brought up with people's votes and rights is never moot. So that's one of the reasons I did support this coming forward when Trustee Gator reached out to me last week. I will say that I would love to continue further discussion on this. I don't mind having the discussion, Trustee Mason, about the combined elections, if that is something that the board wishes to move to and wants to support as the board as a whole moving forward. This item specifically was meant to address the issues noted. Now, I will say that being able to watch the election process, I feel the judges were very professional in what they did. I loved the fact that they were very welcoming to poll watchers coming in and questioning what they were doing, how they were securing ballots. Mr. Muse did a wonderful job running this election process. I feel there were certain steps that could have been a lot more secure than what I witnessed as a poll watcher. But at the same time, I agree that for Ethan coming in and this being his first time conducting an election, I think he was extremely organized. I will continue to say, I do not feel anyone should be alone with residents' ballots. And I know that did happen this election, is there were people allowed to access the areas unattended with only one person being there, and that compromises ballots. And do I think Mr. Muse would compromise the ballot? Absolutely not. But that does not mean that we will always have Mr. Muse present with us as a town clerk. I appreciate him and all of his efforts in this, and so this doesn't have to do with the distrust of anybody. This has to do with how it appears to our residents. And how it appears to our residents is what our responsibility is as trustees. And it is our job to fix issues that appear that they might not be on the up and up. Even if they are on the up and up, it is all about perception. And if we have ability to say we are going to actively engage in saying, yes, we support transparency and safety of elections, I don't think an item like this could be argued. Now, can we set up a special meeting to approve these after we've had residents had a chance to look at them and say, yes, I think this is appropriate, and that's how I want my ballot protected? Because at the end of the day, that's what it comes down to, is what our residents choose on having their ballots secure. But we also have Title One that protects those measures as well. So I was in support of John bringing this. I'm still in support of the election integrity moving forward and have no issues with what was brought. I would have liked it to have been added, so residents would have had a chance to look at all of the documentation. I hope that it is amended to be added to the packet so residents can view it, because I know we have added items to packet later that has been presented without having it in the packet to initially present to us. That's my standing on it. And I thank you, Trustee Gator, for wanting something like this to come. And even though it wasn't an election that you were looking at as far as the results, I admire you for still wanting to put through election integrity items, even though you won't be remaining on our board at this time.
Thank you. Trustee, I'm going to skip you, go to Trustee Daly and go back to you.
I am appalled that we're continuing to talk about this, and at this time and with this timing, at this moment. For a board that touts and encourages transparency, to then discuss the cornerstone of democracy, elections and voting, without notifying the public that we are going to do so, is an act against democracy. We are discussing the most basic right of Americans and people who live in Wellington without them knowing that we are, and that is wholly inappropriate. And after many opportunities of highlighting that, continued to proceed. And that, in itself, degrades the confidence of our governance and the role that we represent here, representing the people of Wellington. Although I understand and want always elections to be as inclusive, accessible as possible, the timing is completely unnecessary to discuss it today. There's absolutely no reason why this needs to be happening. And what it does accomplish, though, is a distrust and lack of confidence in our elections process. You can say over and over again, I'm not questioning that. I'm not talking about integrity. I'm not talking about this. It's done really, really well. But the timing of bringing up right now says otherwise loudly, and it is inappropriate. I will not speak to any of the specific rules in this, because again, as I said, we're discussing rights of Americans and those who live in Wellington without them knowing that we are. And I haven't even had the opportunity to read it, and I refuse to do so as fast as possible, within 10 minutes. That's not acceptable, and not how I represent the Town of Wellington. So I have no comments on these specific rules, but I do want to state my objection that this is inappropriate and should not be discussed in this manner. And it's embarrassing that we're doing so, and I refuse to participate.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to say my little bit. Yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot of great stuff here. I just think that the timing is incorrect. Since we are still currently in the election of which the-- What are they called? What'd you put them here? The Poll Watcher Two and Poll Watcher One, I believe. Those statements are from this current election, the one that is ongoing at this point in time, and will not be completed until Friday. That is the whole reason I didn't think that this item was in order for us to be discussing. We're now here discussing it. And I think this is something that we need to move forward with the future board at a future date and time, once the election has been completed. That's where I stand. And then, Trustee Gator, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I'd like to hear from members of the public. I know we had at least one member who asked to speak, and you told them that this would be their time.
All right. Okay, now it would be time for public comment. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
Thank you, Amanda Wilson. I am really glad this issue was brought up. It's very concerning to me as a public citizen to know that at a town level, there's not rules in place, and it looks like there's a rule that was, rules that were signed by the designated election official that weren't adhered to. So I'm not sure why someone would sign something that they wouldn't be willing to adhere to. Also, knowing that there's not currently, from my understanding, that this individual can be alone with ballots is disconcerting to me, because I'm not challenging his integrity, but it does leave room for if he's not an honest, upstanding citizen, that he could potentially engage in fraud. So that's just concerning to me as a public citizen. And I would just like to see, since you all are here for the people and by the people, that you are holding our best interests in mind. And I think this is a very important thing to be voted on. I think it's important to address, and I think absolutely every town should have, should follow county and state rules, because it's, to my understanding, that if you don't, then there's potential for fraud. And then, there's potential for a lack of integrity. So I do think this is important, and I do think it should be voted on, and I do think it should keep being addressed, as a citizen, as a voter. And again, you know, we are the people, so I think we should be-- Our vote should be considered precious enough and important enough to have measures in place. And that's just interesting to me, that if the election's still going on, well, you know, are the ballots secure? Can someone go on there now and go tamper with them? If there's only one person that has access to that, I mean, it's almost like it's not even protected now. So that's just very disconcerting to me as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kenna Barrett, and I live in the Knolls. I'm not very good at public speech, and I need a minute to organize my thoughts. I will say that I do agree that I deserve better notice about this subject matter. And I do think that the timing that it's been presented is attacked to sow doubt. I do think that our election that we just went through is legitimate, and I don't think that it is right to present it at this time, especially when the election results are still being completed. I do understand in retrospect saying, hey, something could potentially happen in the future, and then in the future, addressing it at a much more appropriate time, and giving the public ample time to discuss the subject matter. That being said, though, if I do have an opinion on it at this time, even though I wouldn't consider it my complete formulated opinion, I do think that we should consolidate our election with the general election. That way, we would have better resources to handle our elections, and we would probably have a better turnout for our local elections. But that's still something that, a long discussion that should be had, and I don't think that this is an emergency resolution to be voted on to today, because I don't think that that affords the public enough time to address and discuss their concerns. I disagree with trying to sweep this in last minute. I disagree with doing it in the middle of an election. I do think that we needed everyone's agreement to talk about it first. I want an entire board who's ready to discuss it. I don't want two board members colluding, and then when they don't get what they want, trying to drag everyone into it and call it an emergency. I disagree with that entirely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kayla Morrison downtown, downtown in the area here. And I agree with Trustee Gator that we need to make sure that we're following the rules, all of them, and make sure, you know, that we don't have any questions about any of our elections. We know definitely who won, who didn't. I know we all work hard on elections to get our best candidates in, and whoever we consider to be the best candidates. But I really feel we need to incorporate these rules and make sure that they're followed. Thank you.
Hi, Karen Eifert, I live in the Knolls. So I just want to point out something that John said, that this was sent to staff last week, and that Kayla, you were able to be able to see that, and that it was stricken down by you. So my concern is, and this has happened when other trustees have tried to bring things forward with the last mayor and with you as well, but it seems to be like a thing that the mayors do. First of all, we don't live in a strong mayor community, meaning the strong mayor can make decisions on his own without the Board of Trustees. So the mayor is supposed to work with the Board of Trustees, not make decisions on their own, but in compliance with the whole board. And so my concern is that this was a strong mayor move to strike it down, because it would have been in a timely manner, had I been allowed to go forward. They did do it in a timely manner. They tried to do it the right way, and then they were stricken down, but they still wanted to be heard, which I've seen that from Trustee Daly before. She wanted to be heard about certain things, and she was given that time, and she was allowed to explain those things. And I think what's good for the goose is good for the gounder. If you're going to do that for one board member, I don't care what side of whatever rainbow they live on, I don't care what their voting process is, or what party they vote for. It needs to be equal all the way around. So this would have been arriving in a manner that was a timely manner, just like other things you get just the week before, and it comes out in your Friday, whatever thing that tells you what's going to be going on, and you guys get to mull over it the whole weekend before, you know, the packet and everything. That would have been done right. That would have been done correctly, but it was stricken down. And so I just want to make sure that people realize, this isn't Sherrell and John trying to be like, hey, last second, let's throw this in here real quick. No, they followed procedure, and they were stricken down. And at the same time, I hope that this is brought back of whatever time you think is necessary. Usually, these topics are brought up at election time because they're election concerns, and then people don't always think about the election throughout the entire year. So I think that's why it was brought at this time. I don't know, because I wasn't with them when they did it. I don't have any idea. But I sure would like to see a date when it can be brought back. You said that the finalization of the votes and everything for this election will happen on Friday, so I would like to see a clear and concise date and time when they can come back and have that information put into the packet, so the public can view it in the packet before it's presented. Thank you.
Everything Trustee Daly said applies to the mayor. He stopped democracy from happening tonight by removing it from the agenda, so you are to blame. Poll watcher number two, statement. Just a few things I noticed while poll watching. I thought it was strange that the manila envelopes that contained 25 counted ballots each were not sealed. The tally sheets on the outside of the manila envelopes also were not signed by election judges, and I think they should have been signed by the two to four election judges that handled them. It seems that they should have been closed up and marked complete. While the poll watchers did an amazing job, and Ethan seemed to know and adhere to the obvious rules of election, I was surprised that the ballot seemed so disorganized. I didn't like that the ballots sat in a building with easy access for staff members at any time, and the envelopes could easily be tampered with. While I'm sure Ethan did not have any malicious intent, I don't think it was appropriate for him to be alone in the staff office at the town building where the election was being determined. For the majority of the time that I poll watched, he was alone in the office with easy access to ballots that had not yet been verified or counted. As I stated, I'm not implying that he did anything wrong, but I think that the system is inappropriate, and that there should always be at least two people around citizens' ballots with very strict guidelines in place. I'm surprised at how many ballots were delivered to P.O. boxes. I was under the impression that ballots had to be sent to physical addresses, but it sounds like I'm incorrect about that. Eyewitness Holly, one of the election judges, contested a second ballot from a man named Joseph Hutchinson. She had personally come across his ballot a few days before, and this ballot showed as a second attempt at a vote because on a poll book data that Holly had recorded. The second ballot was being contested by Holly and Ethan. I'm not sure the results of that situation. Number one. I arrived and knocked on the back door. Ethan was in the front office sorting ballots. He had completed five out of six daily batches of the 24 before I arrived. I was actually surprised to see Ethan there sorting the ballots by himself. There are two additional supplemental ballots. He was writing them on the backside of the poll book. I'm not aware that the judge's arrival time, I was not aware that the judge's arrival time had been moved, so I left and returned. Ethan was present when I arrived. When watching voter identification, I noted two names I'd reported to Ethan about a week ago. Water Lily, Kyle Mullet, and Matthew Mullet. I caught Matthew Mullet, but was filling out the form when Kyle's was processed while I was in the back room completing paperwork. I do not want to, I want to report that I love this system, and the judges did really-- I do not want to, I want to report that I love this system and the judges did really well. I do not appreciate all the times the ballots were left unattended with a single person in the access in the early morning hours without election judges. It appears to me that Ethan had the freedom to come and go as he wished. I do not appreciate that the manila envelopes were not sealed after tally and that no signatures were placed on inside or external tally sheets. This is of great concern. Thank you very much.
My name is Ben Lysico, 8605 Citation Court. I think, I think what is before you all right now is an opportunity, right? This, the timing on this is, like, is not perfect. How we handle this process is not ideal either, right? But what we do have is, is a resolution to do better as a town and to dig in and not stick our hands, our heads in the sand with this, right? And so what I would ask for is, is issue yourselves a challenge and give like a clear next step out of this and not just, let's not talk about it again, right? And so I think you all have the ability to have a resolution to put this in there and, and give the next board the opportunity to do better, right? And so I think that's the opportunity that you have in this that I would challenge you with. So thank you for your time.
Ed Cannon, Wellington resident and new trustee. Imagine we're gonna be swearing in in two weeks, isn't that right?
Once the election is complete.
Once the election is complete. I've worked a lot of municipalities as city manager and, and I've seen a lot of last minute election kinda shenanigans. I got even caught up in one when I was fired here at Wellington when at the last minute before a board meeting because of a vacancy on the board. A coup was occurred and, and I was out of a job. Now, I think this is an important topic. I like the idea of the consolidated elections in October. I think it's gonna reduce our costs, number one, for the town. Plus it also helps keep integrity of those elections with the county who do have to follow Title I. I'd also like to talk a little bit about a slippery slope. And when, when we start chipping away or adding conditions around civil liberties, that opens the door to further erosion of those rights. As a future trustee, I would welcome a work session after the new board is seated, a new work session to talk about this. I'm not in favor of a special meeting to do this. Again, we get into the timing there and trying to squeeze something in before, you know, opinions change, maybe on the board. I like the idea of the consolidated elections, like I said. That needs to be part of that discussion. I have always put out proper notice for any kind of resolution or ordinance that is coming before the board. And yes, the mayor, the town administrator or two trustees can put something on them on, on a, on the agenda here. And I would commit to working toward addressing this after I'm seated, but I would not want to see something passed last minute in some kind of emergency session that could, you know, jeopardize the future of while I'm in office. Especially I'd like to have an idea of what's in there and have a chance to weigh in on that. Thank you.
Okay, no more further comment. All right, so now as a board, it's time for us to discuss setting a timeline, I believe, or how we're gonna move forward. Obviously, we can't vote on this this evening because it wasn't publicly noticed, but we can set something down to, for future meetings.
I look forward to the report regarding our election from our election official following the completion of the election. And that would be the appropriate time to then ask questions and do follow up regarding election policy in the future.
That is Dan Sapienza.
Trustee Gator?
So I think some great points were made and again, I appreciate us following our rules of order. And I understand, Mayor, you had a different idea of how things should go, but I appreciate you allowing us to have the conversation. To address the issues of timing.
It's okay.
Oh, okay, I'll, I'll finish quickly, Sherrell. The concerns around timing. I know some have said, oh, you're no longer trustee. Well, my term ends next week when the new trustees are sworn in and I look forward to them doing a great job for the town of Wellington. But my job is not done yet. So I brought forward a concern that I saw to say, let's have the board take a look at this. And that doesn't mean it's something that's gonna get approved because I am not one person who makes a decision for the whole board. What's important to me is to follow the process. I agree, I would have preferred this to have been properly noticed in everything. We still have a process that allows us to make amendments to an agenda at the beginning of a meeting and I appreciate the mayor following that process. I appreciate the board members that were willing to have conversation, have conversation. I think at this point, I appreciate what Mr. Sapienza said. I think that yes, because of how it was done, there are concerns on the open meeting. It says where notice is possible, right? We were in a situation where questionable. But I agree, this is something that should be put through that. Something I did also want to address is people are insinuating that this is looking to deal with people's civil liberties. All of these rules that I've suggested that be approached have nothing to do with voters' access. This has everything to do with how we handle ballots once we have them. Not saying we should do elections in this manner, not saying you have to have this and this to vote, not saying you have to do any of that. It had everything to do with when we have the ballots there, we should set ourselves to a higher standard. So at this point, I think an appropriate action would be to set this forward to a date certain. And so what I'd like to do is, I know Trustee Teets wanted to make a comment, but I'd like to make a motion to postpone this to a meeting in June. And that will give the new board time to have a work session on this item. They could have two work sessions on it if they want and then they could take, they will take it up at that point and they will make their decision based on what they want to do at that point. But I know Trustee Teets wanted to say something, so I'll wait to make my motion.
Thank you, Trustee Gator. Trustee Teets?
My main goal was trying to figure out how we could all make this work where everyone felt heard. And I think Trustee Gator did a very good job in that and stating that he would like to move to make a motion to set a date certain for when all of us as new trustees convene in June. One of my additional comments was that this was not treated as an emergency meeting. That was never the generalized idea behind it, nor was there any colluding as we are as two trustees entitled to request something be added to an agenda. This just happened to be something that Trustee Gator and myself supported adding to the agenda as an item. So the collusion side of this, I would absolutely deny as this was simply a means to find out how to secure our elections more appropriately. I do support John was want to, sorry, Trustee Gator, to set it for a date certain. And it was never meant and never will be meant to step on anyone's civil liberties, but it's to protect those liberties was the reason this item was brought forward in the first place. We want to make sure that people's votes are protected. And that's from any side of the aisle and down the middle as well.
Thank you, Trustee Teets. I mean, go for the motion.
All right, I would like to move to postpone consideration, get the actual name here, of the Resolution of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, Supporting Election Integrity and Security to the regular board meeting on June 11th, 2024.
I second it. Mr. Clerk, make a roll call, please. Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
No.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Shussi? The vote of five in favor and one against, the motion carries and the, in consideration of the resolution, is postponed as stated.
Thank you. Okay, on to reports. Mr. Dan Sapienza?
I'll report at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia?
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. I'm excited to announce the hire of our next Finance Director, Nick Redivad. He has served the last two years on the town's Finance Committee and comes to us with an understanding of our financial position and issues that we've gone through. He is a proud member of this community and, and I know he will do a great job for us. His start date is April 29th. And so he'll be working with, with Don Rhodes through the transition and Don will come back later this fall to help us through the 2025 budget process. There is a special meeting next week, April 16th, at which time we will recognize outgoing board members and swear in the newly elected officials. The board will also be appointing a mayor pro tem at that time. And that's what I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff communications are included in the packet. Are there any questions from the board on those items? Board reports. Trustee Wiegand?
I did have a meeting with the Laramie County Behavioral Health and Trustee Daly will be happy that transportation is going to be a big thing on their agenda. So I think that's gonna help as far as access and that's a huge thing. So they're doing great.
Awesome, thank you. Trustee Teets?
I do not have anything at this time.
Thank you. Trustee Gator?
I had a question. Will I have opportunity to give like a closing final statement at our meeting next week? Asking, I'd like to give a final statement to appreciate and I prefer not to do it in my board report, but I just, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, awesome.
There'll be a thing.
Perfect. I, my only board report then in that case is just I want to encourage members of the community for the Finance Committee. The applications are up right now. This is the committee that really helps our staff kind of go through the financials, review those and look at helping create policies is one of the things that we're excited for them to be able to actually start doing because up till now, it's been just trying to get through. We're finally getting caught up on reports. And so now it's time they can start looking at, hey, what are some good policies for us to have as a town? And again, they don't make the policies, but they work with staff to say, here are some good policies that should be sent forward to the board of trustees. And so it is a two-year term, so it runs from election to election. So I would encourage anyone who has an interest in that to consider applying for that, going through the process to be considered for the Finance Committee. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Daly?
This week at CSU, we have, you know, the benefit of having a major university in our backyard. I like to refer to Fort Collins as our backyard instead of the other way around. Usually it's done that way. Their thematic year this year is about democracy. And, and they're in the midst of a democracy summit right now at CSU and there's many events that are free and open to the public. I would recommend that everybody goes. I think that our community in particular may need some more insight on what democracy means and how, and how that's seen and viewed from other perspectives. I think that would be beneficial for our town. One of the things that I'm planning on going to is the Lyric on Thursday night. They're gonna be doing a viewing of Join or Die and it's talking about Putnam's theory of social capital. So, and really understanding why people aren't participating in civil activities anymore and, and why, why it's dying and what needs to happen or they will die, or you know, civil liberties will die. So I would suggest that people attend that. There's many other opportunities as well. This is a great opportunity for us to continue to learn and do better and get more perspectives. And I think that we owe that to everyone. So I would suggest that you go, if you want to go with me, I'm happy to go with you. A lot of them require R S V Ps. But in general, it's an academic view that's put together by people coming from all over the nation. And it's an incredible opportunity in our backyard right now. So I recommend people participate. Also, this next weekend is Clue at the Middle High School for their drama club. So please attend if you're interested in that and support our kids. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Mason?
I just want to thank all of our residents for participating in the 2024 Wellington Municipal Election. I, I know it's been, it's, it's been a lot. It's been stressful, I think, for some folks, but we, we got through it and, and I very much am, will be excited to welcome our new trustees after certification of the election. So thank you, everybody.
Perfect. I don't have any board reports. John, this is our last real official official meeting. It's been a pleasure serving with you and look forward to you being involved in the future, hopefully. So that's all that I have. All in favor of adjourning the meeting?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and I'll close the meeting time being, where's my clock? 8:40 PM.